of the work session on the budget for next year. And it's going to be the nondepartamental budget work session. And we'll start off with the Soldatna Historical Society, followed by the Salteshi Trails Association, then followed by the Boys and Girls Club of the Kenai Peninsula, and then the Soldatna Area Senior Citizens. Each group will have 10 minutes to make their presentation. And after that, there will be or could be questions from the council and other comments. So we'll start off with the Soldatna Historical Society.
Good afternoon, everyone. I don't think we'll take 10 minutes, but we'll take few minutes. So I think you have something in your packet, a letter that Carmen sent out about our budget. I'm president of the Museum and Historical Society. Sarah's vice president, he resigned in February, peak break. So somehow I drew the short straw, I guess. So just want to run through a few things here. Last year, we hardly had any people attending. It was, as you know, it was very slow on tourism. We did hire not only a docent, but a intern. And the intern did a lot of work on our place. So it was great. We got a lot of stuff down in the basement that we're making use of. We did open up the Chikanski Cabin. So we've got a lot of stuff done that I guess was on the do list. And it was a good year to do that. Oral histories, we kind of put that on hold because of COVID, but we'll start resuming those shortly as we make it safe to do. We are looking for a docent this year. So if anyone knows anyone young or old that wants to work at the museum this summer, please let us know. And I think we're going to open June 1st or somewhere right in there a little later this year. We figured it might still be a little slow. Our biggest challenge this year is going to be spruce bark beetle trees. I know the city of Soldatna has helped us with dead trees in the past. And anything the city of Soldatna can help us with there would be appreciated. And Sarah?
Well, I would like to encourage everyone to check out soldatnamuseum.com. We have updated our website. We have a video on the homepage. We just started a YouTube channel last year. And it features last year's intern, Abby. And she did a real nice video that I'd been previously to check out. That talks about how we opened up the Chikanski Cabin and also a little bit of background of Soldatna Homestead. We also have updated our lifetime and honorary membership page on our website and our board of directors. So we have some new officers. Brian Taylor is one of our new officers as of March.
Any questions?
Just one. Historically, I believe your ask for the city of Soldatna was $10,000. And that was halved, I think, last year was the first year that you reduced the ask. And I was just curious, do you have need for the full amount again moving forward? Would that, would there be justification for that? Or is that reduction to the $5,000 ask still appropriate?
No, we just need 5,000 plus whatever comes from the major camping fund, which usually traditionally has been around $7,500.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hutchings?
Yes, I was wondering, Mr. Bagley, what is the membership fee for an individual membership for a year and the other one for lifetime?
Yes, the membership fee for a year is $20. The family is $30 and the lifetime fee is $250. And we usually also try to collect $5 for the Kenai Peninsula Historical Association when we're sending out our membership notices, which is, that's a broader one of the six museums on the Kenai Peninsula or under the Kenai Peninsula Historical Association.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. Two questions. One, are you going to have the annual community barbecue this year?
That's a very good question. So the annual barbecue this year is going to look a little differently since Soldatna Progress Days has gone from a two day event to a four day event this year. And we were encouraged to have the barbecue at the park, but we, that kind of goes against the purpose of having it at the museum. So instead of holding this year, the barbecue at the museum and being in competition with Soldatna Progress Days and everything that's going on, we're going to have a booth on that Friday. And at Via with the Soldatna State Market is planning on having some of our homesteaders do oral histories on the smaller stage that day. She's making it sort of like a homestead activity day during, you know, the family time, basically, before the music in the park happens in the evening. So we'll have a booth and we'll be able to promote the museum through that.
Okay. So, and can you talk more about the signage that you're going to be doing?
I don't, did everyone see these? Is that for?
They were emailed out, yes.
Yeah, okay. So each one of these is a different sign. And they will be mounted in front of the cabins or the boats or whatever the deal is. And they're really nice, I think about three by two feet or something like that in size. And we'll have them mounted backwards. I probably should be able to take them post right now. So anyway, we'll have those up. And we're trying to do something like the CCL Historical Association has, with the really nice posters at an angle, signs at an angle that you can read to tell a story. We've done a lot of, we're finding people want to move past to the museum. They don't always want a guided tour. So we're trying to do more to accommodate people that are, I guess, maybe the younger generation that come through and want to look and leave quickly.
And just to add to that, I don't know if you were updated last year or not on the fact that we have recordings that are motion centered. So if you get in front of any of the cabins with a live recording that's playing about the music that happens as well, so this will be a good addition to having the planning board with the live recording.
Are there any other questions from the council or comments? I did take someone through there, I think it was two years ago. National President of the Elks, they were up here on tour. And we spent a couple, three hours there. And they, they really enjoyed it. And I still have pictures of them standing next to the bears and everything else. They thought, they thought it was great. But it was a very, very informative couple of hours up there. Appreciate it. And did you have any other presentation to make? Anything more? Okay, well, thank, thank you very much. Next, we'll have the Salteshi Trails Association presentation. And I believe Mr. Chilton was going to declare a conflict on that because he's a member of the board.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I do serve currently as the secretary for Salteshi Trails Association. So with your approval, I would choose to refrain from any discussion during this presentation or following.
Thank you.
I'm Chad, so I'll set my own for myself. My name's Jenny Neiman. I'm the admin coordinator for Salteshi Trails Association. It has been a weird year. We are, we do a lot of events at Salteshi. And last March, we made the decision to cancel all of our in-person events. So for a bit there, we were wondering, what do we do with ourselves? And then it became immediately clear that usage was spiking as the trails. There were so many people getting outside and recreating because there wasn't anything else to do. So we quickly realized that our efforts and funds that normally go toward events were going to be redirected to maintenance, especially because we had a lot of first time users coming out. We saw families, we saw kids, we saw folks that are, you know, looking at the signs going, is this, is this trail? This is where I go, what can we do? And we really wanted to maintain a safe and functional trail system for folks that were getting out during COVID. A big challenge though with us is we don't have events. Our revenue comes primarily from memberships and donations and events. And memberships and donations are very closely tied to events. So when people come out and participate in things at Salteshi, they realize, oh, hey, these trails just don't magically happen. There's people behind them and there's equipment and there's funding that goes into it. And they are then a little more motivated to become members and to give a donation. So we saw a precipitous drop in revenue last spring when we stopped having events. So the city of Soldatna's grant came at a wonderful time for us to be able to keep up on maintenance. We did try to shift gears a little bit and still offer some fun things at the trails that were COVID safe. So we participated in the Great Soldatna Bear Hunt. We had Salty Bear was hiding in a tree out on the trails in the multi-use section. We had a lot of families, a lot of kids. We have a picture of the gentleman who had found it Salty in the tree. Salty unfortunately had a craniotomy by the birds and ended up ending his tenure across the street of the landfill. But he was a lot of fun when he was out there. Our cycle series, our bike events in the summer are hugely popular. And we made the decision not to do those in person, but we did go out and flag a new course every week and post a map and ask people to participate in that virtually. So that had a pretty good response, nowhere near the event revenue that we normally get off that, but something to kind of keep people outside and give them something to do. We very luckily were able to get some cares grant supports, which helped cover our operational expenses last year. So that was pretty huge for us. Maintenance wise, spring and summer, we leveled and improved drainage on some of our main trails. So our Wolf Trail, which is the main trailhead at Skyview, is pretty much a connector trail to get you to everything else. And then our Sly Fox Trail, the crossing the landfill, also hugely popular. So great to get that done. In the fall, our board decided to allow for the first time Class 1 and Class 2 bikes to use the trail, which we saw as an accessibility issue. Even some of our ladder loops still have some pretty good hills and it's all on dirt. So folks with mobility issues or seniors appreciated the opportunity to have a little bit of assistance while they're getting out there and recreating. We did in the fall go back to some of our events. Our first one was Scoop Night. It's kind of a trick or treat event on the trails. You can see the Soldatna police there handing out some candy. And that was, that was a good test for us to see how the community would respond to the COVID mitigation measures that we were asking, to wear masks and social distance. Folks did great at that. So that motivated us to be able to do our youth ski program in the winter, which is incredibly popular. We did limit registration this year, again with COVID in mind. We kept kids in pods. We asked them to use masks when they were on the field, communicating with each other. And that program went great. This winter, our longtime maintenance manager, Bill Holt, retired. And Tom Segerman, the local contractor and longtime Salteshi person, stepped up and is trying to fill Bill's very large shoes. Made so much more difficult because we had an actual, real live Alaska winter this year. We had so much snow. We were grooming our tails off. 112 to 160 hours per month of grooming. And that split between about half and half between our maintenance position and volunteer leadership. We are very grateful and very lucky to have some awesome volunteers and stuff like that. Some other events that we sort of shifted, our annual meeting and film festival, we did that online. We did a thing where we decorated some trees and asked folks to see around and find them and have some apple prizes. We did hold our ski for women. You can see some blue spider ginsburgs came out and participated in that. That was a lot of fun. And our tour at Salteshi, kind of one of our flagship ski events, we had record participation this year, even though we didn't have an after party, we didn't have an aid station, all that COVID safe stuff to cut down on having folks congregating. No one blinked an eye. We got a lot of appreciation and thanks for doing the extra effort of holding an event last year. And in December, we also renewed our ten year lease with the Borough. In the spring, our board finalized a strategic plan. And it's really going to give us a lot of direction going forward to doing grant funding and figuring out what to do with donations and prioritizing our efforts in the future. We just applied for a recreational trails partnership grant, which we've had a council and asked for support to do that. We're hoping to build ourselves a maintenance building and relocate all of our stuff that is currently on the deal behind Skyview. We are planning on doing our Sprocket's Youth Bike Program. That has 80 kids registered currently, as with our youth ski program. That registration fills about two hours of opening online. Those programs are incredibly popular. And we are also planning on returning our biking series this summer as well. And in the next couple of weeks here, we're going to have some new boot brushes at all of our trailheads. That's a part of the, you know, watershed forum. And that is an invasive weed project. There's some orange hockweed, I believe, that's been found on the trails, which is invasive. So some signage and some brushes can bring people that are not trapped outside Salteshi birds onto Salteshi and potentially bring some little invasive blommettes. So coming up next year, some pretty big things on our agenda. We do silver mediation as the Historical Society. That is going to be a big project for Salteshi. As I'm sure you guys know, with all your parks, this area got hit pretty hard by the spruce bark beetles. And we have a pretty big fire risk going on right now. In the past, we've dealt with dead trees by working with individual wood cutting groups, so churches with families or whatnot. There is no way to scale up that approach to cover the amount of ground and number of trees that we have to deal with. So we're working with the Borough and with our land manager. They have a contractor that they've done some larger scale remediation. So we're trying to, the tough part for us is just figuring out a time when we can like work down some trails because they are popular year round. But we're really hoping to get that done this year. Signage, we've got some pretty good plans for that. Updater Kios, E911 signs, so working with CDS. We have little plaques with a number. So if someone ever has an issue on the trail and they need assistance, they don't necessarily have to be able to know, we'll take a left on Wolf and a right on Squirrel or whatever. They can look at a sign, call 911 and say, well, I see a sign that says E4. And that's a code that will work with CDS, GPS, so they can come immediately to that specific location. We're also working on some updated maps and some additional signage for our single track system. We are going to institute a grooming tracking app. So all of our users will be able to see in real time when your groomers are out and where they're going, so they have a better idea of where the first up trails will be. And we're real hopeful we get that RTP grant so we can start work on our maintenance building. If we don't, it's enough of a necessity for us at this point that we're probably going to try and use some local contractors and see if we can at least tackle that project in some sort of way. We are out of space and I am probably about out of time. So if anyone has any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
There are any questions from the council? Ms. Hutchings?
I'll ask the same question I asked the Historical Society. What is your membership?
Oh, membership, so for student membership is $15. Individual is $50 and family is $100, I believe, $75 or $100.
Thank you. How many members do you have?
Oh, active members that have donated within the last year is upward of 500. On our rolls, people who have donated maybe missed last year for whatever reason is from 800.
Well, I'm a big supporter of Salteshi Trails. And I think your presentation was exceptional and answered lots of questions.
I just have one, one question here. Looking at the two years on the budget documents, it looks like you're running a deficit each year. How are you handling that?
Well, so two things. This is a very conservative budget and we certainly hope to bring in more revenue. Looking at it right now, and I can tell you for sure that Pit Tech gives actually about $2,000 more than we're funded for. We're actively pursuing more donations and more memberships. We do have a budget reserve to float things a little bit. And we're really hopeful that we do get that RTP grant that can cover some of our maintenance positions if we shift in toward working on this maintenance project. Hard and more budget. So, but we have definitely run a deficit budget last year as well. So in a, we're in a growth phase at Salteshi. And we'll be building and adding services and adding staff. And particularly, we're hoping that support will come. We're not far off of what we're budgeting for, but we are hoping for the next year.
Thank you. Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great presentation. I hope you'll consider if the maintenance grant doesn't come forward, that you might come back to the city. I'm going to speak for myself, but I would be very supportive.
It's not the most exciting project you've ever done at Salteshi. It's not like a new school trail, but we are so thankful.
See, no more questions. I thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you all.
Next up is the Boys and Girls Club, and they will be on Zoom.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Thank you for having me here today to present on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club of the Kenai Peninsula and Soldatna, Alaska. We have been working very hard to make sure that we could serve the youth in the Soldatna community for, well, many, many years, but especially during the COVID-19 pandemic. Unfortunately, you know, it's no secret, we were forced to close down during portion of the pandemic, but we were able to secure a location right there in the city of Soldatna, in the Soldatna Prep Facility. And at present, we currently have enrolled for our summer program close to our pre-COVID numbers. We have 80 youth registered for our summer programming and are expecting a nice bump in that as the summer progresses. We provide after school programming predominantly throughout the school year. And now we'll have the ability to provide day camps when schools are closed during in-service days, as well as as an extended summer program to bridge that gap a little more closely to when school closes and when school reopens again, so that unsupervised time is more, is reduced. And after school care and day camp services are more affordable and available for, for older kids who, and families who need that in lieu of maybe a childcare facility. Our program is large, programming is largely academic. We, with heavy focus on social emotional development. There's definitely a mental health piece associated with that. We are building workforce development, even at a young age, preparing them things as simple as time management and, and some of the basic skill sets that you need as you grow into adolescence and then adulthood. And we, we are working really hard to address some of the academic loss that we're seeing as a result of the extended school closures as well. We also feed children. We fed youth in Soldatna throughout the entire pandemic through a pickup spot there located at Soldatna Elementary School from our central kitchen. And we'll be moving to a breakfast and lunch, as well as a snack at day camp services and our summer program camps throughout the year. We've issued, organization wide, we've issued close to $60,000 in scholarships. And we're getting close to the $10,000 and $15,000 in scholarships for the Soldatna program as well. A lot of this has resulted to increased need. There's a lot of families that were hit really hard or unable to pay for even the summer program fees and the membership fees. And so we work really hard to address children who are at risk, low income families, and, and any other child or family who would need us, first responders, are, and, and just anybody really, to make sure that kids have a safe place that's positive, that's enriching, and creating a positive community around these children to help them overcome adversity, especially during a COVID pandemic. And as we move forward, we're seeing, you know, four times the expense. A lot of that has resulted in increased staffing needs, lower ratio, staff to youth ratio, cohorting, and, and of course, the addition of a new facility that we're, we're paying, paying for this month. We, we appreciate the city of Soldatna. I want to make sure that, that you all hear that from me. I'm very thankful to the city of Soldatna and their hard work and, and clear devotion to providing for its citizens and its children. Without the continued support and your partnership, a lot of what we are able to do now as an organization and a lot of the other organizations would not have been able to take place. And so, you know, I know this is a budget work session, but I wanted to make sure you guys all heard how, how deeply appreciative I am on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club for your continued support and care for the community as we've overcome this. So we've seen a, an uptick of adolescent and child suicides and child abuse and at-risk situations. And we're working really hard to address those. And I think that with our increased ability to serve, we'll see a marked reduction in that in providing an additional space for, for those youth to come and participate in our programming.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Carey?
I greatly appreciate you thanking us. But I want to tell you, my standpoint, we thank you. When I look at the thousands of young people who are being fed, there are people that you are impacting their whole life by, again, providing that safe space and that sense of belonging that will carry them through their life. Whereas without it, the negative things you mentioned, such as suicides and other things, are possible, if not probable. So I just want to say thank you for all the people that work with you. And I'm just a real pleased you're part of our community as you are in the communities throughout the peninsula.
Ms. Hutchings?
Rachel, I was just wondering, how many of, what percentage of your kids are scholarship kids?
We're a little over 55% at this point. Organization wide, in some, some locations, we're hitting 70%. But our Soldatna facility at this point, I think we're sitting around 55%.
Okay. And I just wanted to touch base. How is your Seward facility doing? Because I know that was new last year.
Yeah, so we've had a Seward community program in the school site. And the city of Seward has partnered with us and we assumed the Seward youth facility. And that has been flourishing. It's actually been a pretty good opportunity in that community to do, do what we're doing in Soldatna now and what we plan to do forward, which is to remain open and support youth and provide day camp services when the school's closed, while also supporting the school district and really coming together and supporting the youth. It's, it's been a very successful program. And it's grown since we've assumed that. And I'm, I'm really happy to, to say I consider that a pretty good success there.
So I, I'm aware that, you know, this is for the city of Soldatna, but how many locations do you have?
We, well, we have quite a few right now. Some will be closing because they were temporary pop-up sites to meet spatial needs and also address the needs of families in the various communities we serve. But we're serving five communities and we have 10 facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chilton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question about your current facility use over at the former Soldatna Prep Building. So my understanding was that lease was a temporary grant from the Borough that went through this year. Has there already been an agreement established to extend that into next year? Or where are those talks at?
So the way the grant, it wasn't a grant. It was, it's a true lease in that we, we have to pay a monthly fee, though it's nominal. I, I, if I had to venture a guess, we're covering the cost of our presence there. But we, it's, it's, the intent of it was that it was a permanent three months. They guaranteed us that. And it's month to month from that point forward until they figure out what the plan is with that facility. So discussions with the managing group at the Borough regarding that building, they've indicated that this is going to be a long-term facility and that we will have a good amount of time of notice before we need to make other plans in terms of servicing the youth. And so for, for now, we definitely, we know we have it for the summer and we know we have it through the next school year.
Excellent. And then my follow-up question that would be is there's a, there's a lot of space over in that building. I'd be curious, now, are you utilizing any of the rooms over there as a dedicated teen space for quasi-stand-up teen center, or if not, have you explored that? Because I mean, that would make an excellent location, being within walking distance of the high school there.
It would, and and actually, that's one of the plans that we have moving forward. My first thing is I want to make sure that we're able to serve the kids that that we are serving now and make sure we have a solid program. We do not have use of that entire facility. We only have use of a dedicated amount of classrooms, which is being utilized by the youth that we are currently serving. However, as we start moving away towards our social distancing and cohorting as a mitigation practice, which I still feel is is needed at this point in time for the safety of the kids in the community, we will definitely be exploring what that looks like as far as a pre-teen and teen program.
That's excellent news. And again, just thank you for all the excellent work that you and your organization do for our kids.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel, for the presentation. This is with respect to the Kenai Facility. Does the city of Kenai donate funds to the Boys and Girls Club like the city of Soldatna does?
So we have a facility that we use that's contributed by the city of Kenai, as well as our secondary pop-up site that was contributed by the city of Kenai. In terms of of physical dollars, no, but they they contribute facility locations for us as well.
Where are the facility locations that the city contributes?
So the teen center is a facility that we don't have to pay for, and the secondary pop-up location that we had is in their fire training facility upstairs, which helped us serve some of the additional spatial needs that we had for the city of Kenai.
Any other questions? Just one quick comment, and I guess it'd be a question. I was looking at the Soldatna Clubhouse income and expense sheets here, and I don't see anywhere on there, unless I'm totally missing it, the city's contribution.
I'm sorry, which contribution are you?
I'm looking at the documents that were attached with the the letter, and it says Soldatna Clubhouse, and it shows income and and
Yeah.
expenses. And I didn't see anywhere on there for the city's contribution.
You know what? You're you are correct in that. That was an oversight on my part. I wanted to make sure that we were sure of what the city was wishing to contribute to the club before we built it in the budget.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, thank you very much for your presentation, and we'll move on to the next presenter,
Thank you.
which will be the Soldatna Area Senior Citizens.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, as a senior, do I need to sit out of this?
There wouldn't be anybody left in here, then.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think, I don't even know what day it is. Is it this Wednesday? Happy Wednesday, everybody. It still feels like Monday. My name's John Walker. I am the Executive Director of Soldatna Area Senior Citizens, which operates the Soldatna Senior Center among the other activities that we'll talk about. My left, somebody might know this gentleman, Ken Lantaster, is the President of the Board of Directors for Soldatna Area Senior Citizens. This last year has been an adventure. COVID has affected all of us greatly, but the seniors themselves, many of them have been truly isolated for nearly a year. Our mission statement, we are dedicated to supporting and helping each other in a way which enhances the quality of life. We need struggle with quality of life issues all year long. So that everyone is valued equally and has a feeling of self-worth. On March 18th of last year, we shut down the Soldatna Teen Center. We all group activities, including congregate meals. No activities at all. Based on state guidance, health mandates, we could not have senior citizens in our building congregating today. Our regional guidance from CDC, from the state, was senior citizens, stay home. Do not leave your house unless absolutely necessary. Go to medical appointments. Have people bring you your groceries. Have your neighbors help. Have your kids help. Don't leave your house. Three thirds of my staff members are senior citizens. And by the care of community services, Hope Community Resources bailed us out in nearly six to eight weeks and provided their employees to us and volunteers so that we could deliver meals to our seniors at home now. As that number steadily rose in the initial stages of COVID, I would say in the first couple of months, we probably had doubled the number of meals we delivered on a daily basis, monthly basis. What we do in normal world, in the normal world, hungry get meals, thirty meals in the dining room at the Soldatna Senior Center, home-delivered meals to those seniors who are truly homebound, cannot get out of their house. Unassisted transportation services, taking seniors to medical appointments, pharmacies, post offices, shopping trips to the grocery store, for folks who do not have transportation of their own and cannot afford faculty packages. We provide information assistance and outreach services, helping our seniors get the information they need for benefit program assistance by either show off or my furniture or whatever. We also operate the Kenai Peninsula Family Caregiver Support Program as a grant funded program through the state. They provide support services, information assistance, rescue services to unpaid family caregivers, getting care of their loved ones. Give them a break if they can get out of their new job. So their loved ones have to have somebody with them all the time. We can help provide that. We also operate Fireweed Villa Senior Housing, a big complex behind the seniors. They have eight tenants. And some of them hardly left their apartments to go back to their homes. As far as FY21 goes, all group activities, as I mentioned, including congregate meals, they flowed from July 1st through March 30th portion. Closed public traffic, appointments were made as needed for in-person assistance, paperwork. We reopened for congregate meals finally on April 1st portion. For just over a year, our centers did not operate for in-house dining. What we found on early in the pandemic was the meals, the folks that came to congregate meal services, Soldatna Senior Center, they didn't come for the awesome food, although it is pretty darn awesome, as I've studied. And I don't see enough of you there offering that to senior members of the city council. It is awesome food, but what those folks came for was companionship, socialization, interaction. They hadn't none of that left. Our board stepped up, split up our entire client list, and amongst the nine of them, and periodically started making wellness check calls to our folks. Hey, how you doing? Anything you can do for us? Just a voice. As I mentioned, our home-delivered meals skyrocketed. Currently, I'll tell you in a minute here, we have tripled the number of home-delivered meals we provide on a monthly basis. Some of those folks we deliver to, the only person they see every day. We are currently delivering to about 75 to 80 individuals per day. We used to deliver to 25 individuals. Most of these new individuals we deliver home-delivered meals to are new clients and never used our services before. They are truly homebound folks. These are our folks that are going to transition back to congregate meals soon. Our estimate in the admin office is about 70% of them will remain homebound meal clients that we use restrictions. When we opened, reopened for congregate meals on April 1st, I have to limit the dining room to 32 people. Part of that is because of COVID and social distancing. We're still being very cautious there. Not everybody's been vaccinated. But part of that is also, I'm pushing 80 meals a day out the door already. We're at capacity, where I used to serve 80 people in the dining room and deliver 30 meals out. Now I can have 30 people in the dining room while everybody's delivering meals. Limited transportation is available, one client at a time, but our already limited time frame for transportation is even further reduced by the fact that my delivery routes are now two and a half hours long. Telephonic information assistance continues at ultra-high levels. Outreach has increased greatly with the board members making calls, robo-calls that we were trying to send out once a week. I think Slack might have been there. I apologize to all of my seniors. Good guy acted. Family caregiver support program had some building issues a couple of months ago. We are in the process of moving into the 4B building. And after a month and a half now, we are finally going to have internet and phone connected in their new office. They've been working out of the senior centers without help. Their computers are being integrated into our computer network at the senior center that we just contracted with an IT company to operate, manage our systems. My expertise ended in the 2000s. As a, as a comparison, last year in fiscal year 2020, wow, can I talk about this? We served 9,589 congregate meals. 2,418 of those were those last three months, so 9,552 meals were delivered this year. So far through April 30th, this year, I've, I've delivered over 15,000 meals already. So that's interesting. Yeah, already. So our revenue fundraising activities, as was mentioned by one of our other folks here, have all been canceled. Can't hold them there. That's been difficult. We canceled Luau last year, the fall roundup last year. We've already canceled Luau this year. Meal donations, we used to get a lot of donations from the folks who come in. Many of the new people we picked up are not able to donate the suggested donation, and that's fine. We provide those payments regardless. Supply costs, food costs have actually been thin. We're supplying about the same meal, maybe a few less total meals. The kitchen supply box, the meal trays, gloves, the go-containers, fuel, the vehicles. That's all, that's all gone up quite a bit. We are actually exploring reusable meal trays, testing those out, have a grant for that. Good news, charitable gaming sales have been very high over the last few months. Thanks to all the federal government for those economic impact payments, Soldatna Senior Center, great appreciation. That's the only thing I can attribute to that, too. We are 150,000 above what we have in the last few years. In conclusion, with support to grants, fundraising donations, we continue to service a lot of area seniors with a giant increase in service to the homebound seniors. Actually, we increased our request this year to $12,700 region for the next three years, reflecting roughly a 54% increase in the number of meals that are served in that way.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Carey?
A couple of things. First of all, John, I'd like to, one more information. You mentioned, again, those that you're now providing meal services to at their homes that won't come in, that haven't been receiving services before. Why not? And I don't mean that in the negative, but is, I'm going to assume these aren't people moving here that are seniors and are going to be isolated kind of forever. Where have those people been?
Some of those folks are, and I can't speak to everyone.
I understand.
I can make a lot of assumptions here. A lot of folks that we picked up, I'm not open up to you at the senior center yet. Picked up a lot. A lot of those folks had family members that were helping them out, and family members there, and they had friends helping them out, and everybody's distancing, nobody visiting them. You know, some of those folks I said are truly, truly homebound. Albers from World War II, that's him. He's not going to hop on his walker and head on out to the senior center for lunch. But, you know, Alf might have come once or twice in the past, but it's not somebody that would have regularly come.
Right.
I think the majority of them, if they don't have family members, they didn't have to help them out because of the distance. I delivered some of the meals, and you could tell that no one ever.
And he were afraid to go shopping for nine, 10 months. Everyone knows that. Well, this is a source of interest. We picked up a lot of.
I want to extend.
Family members calling and worried about their parents, you know, from Global 48. Hey, my dad, my dad gave you.
Right.
I live in Michigan. My dad was, he's not going to follow that. That's, that's been a lot of it, and a lot of it's.
I want to extend to both of you because I know you'll have contact with the seniors. You're part of that continuum of care. Frontier and I am President of their board. We very much appreciate being able to assist you and the good work that you do. And again, it's a part of this community. There are so many different groups that want to help. You provide the vehicle, the structure by which we can help. Again, you have the names, you have the addresses, you know how to help, and I just want to extend to the seniors, and I am a member. I just greatly appreciate it. And as I get older and may need more assistance, I just see you're something I depend on in living in this community. I just thank you both. And Kenny, there's so many things I can say in terms of all the services you've done forever for us, and thank you for your work with the seniors.
Appreciate that, Councilman Carey. And I will reiterate, Frontier and Hope bailed us out at the beginning of the pandemic. Frontier bailed us out at the end of November. We had staff members that diagnosed COVID. We isolated every staff member there. We got the city of Kenai seniors there to prepare meals for it. Frontier's hope to Kenai Senior Center get up with meals and deliver to our, to our clients. So Frontier's really well done. So thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Chilton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a small list of questions here as taken note of throughout the presentation. So first of all, Mr. Walker, thank you so much for your work that you all do for our our senior population here. I I really do worry about the the mental health damage that we're going to be seeing among that population with the effects of long-term isolation. I'm just curious, throughout this last year, has there been any exploration of partnerships with other agencies that might be able to provide counseling or other mental health support services, like maybe PCHS or other providers that might be able to do teleconferencing and and try to do some outreach and and utilize some of the Cares money that's out there to to provide those services to this this population that really needs it right now?
Yes, so the program manager of senior in-home services at Frontier Community Service works very closely with us. We share clients. We have a MOU sharing data. If one of us sees a client that can use the other services, we refer them. During the big round of COVID funding with the state pass and COVID cares, we applied for a grant for numerous projects, one of which has been dubbed the best benefiting every senior community. I have a new program coordinator funded through June 30th by this brand to come in and develop programs, outreach, to reduce those effective isolations. She turned around and brought in an outreach specialist, is what we're calling her right now, but it's a friendly visitor program. This person called around to our oldest of seniors. How's it going? We have a senior here. Kind of like a visiting, comfortable with that, or can just talk on the phone? And I think she has already made And I think she has already made somewhere around seventy or eighty home visits in town.
Wow, that's, that's incredible.
Huge success. Our program coordinator is working on other grant applications right now, continuing funding this whole program and expanding to other services. We are working on a project right now, the effect support. Frontier has thirty, forty life alert systems, but they don't have anybody to go out and train people in their home.
Got it.
Setting them up. Or we're actually working on a grant that, with that program. Yes, we are. We have a whole program now dedicated to trying to reduce that.
That's highly encouraging. Thank you. And then the other question I have is your service area, do you, do you provide services for seniors that reside outside city limits or you restrict those services exclusive to within the city? Okay, excellent. And then on that note, has there ever been any funding from the borough to help support those outside the city or?
Yes. The borough has a senior grant program that they provide funds to. I want to say all the senior centers and the adult daycare centers on the peninsula. Not all of it, all of it. But yes, they have a senior grant program. They also found tears running through the past summer that helped us to purchase hand sanitizer. Sanitation equipment for the preparation for reopening. They help pay for the maintenance costs that we add if they think so. I mean, yeah, the borough supports this thing. They provide a grant.
Okay, excellent. And then my last question is I, I really am always excited to explore partnerships to scale efficiencies. Have you guys ever partnered with or explored partnership with the food bank? Because I, I know in my experience with them, they often will have different amounts of food for different programs that are excess that they're trying to get rid of. Like, there might be like a bulk supply that's restricted to only being distributed through meals with their cafeteria program, and they can't just give that out the door in traditional food boxes or vice versa. So maybe in lieu of partnering with the Keene High Senior Center for getting meals, maybe we could, you know, at times when the food bank here has excess food that they need to be preparing meals for through their cafeteria that they can't get out, maybe leveraging some of that for the.
It's a possibility. I had an existing MOU with Keene High Senior Center for something like this, but the food bank and we are part, we are an agency partner of the food bank. We do purchase bulk amounts of food from them regularly. That's one of the reasons we pay a lot to give our food cost down this year. We also are a distributor for commodity food boxes for seniors. And this past year, when they had all those excess foods coming in for the boxes and whatnot, yeah, we, we had volunteers actually driving around delivering those. Yeah, we are an existing partner of the food bank.
That's awesome. You're, you're ahead of me on every one of these points, so great work. Thank you. Absolutely.
Any other questions? I have one, just a quick one. If a homebound senior called and needed food delivery, do they have to be a member of the senior center or will you deliver to anyone, any senior?
Any qualifying senior will be served by our.
And what is, what is a qualifying senior?
Qualifying senior is a, an individual sixty ages, sixty years or older. Other qualifying individuals under that are spouses that may be younger than that sixty-year-old senior. They are senior. They also qualify for services under our grants. And disabled attendants living with a senior six years old. And caregivers that are working and living with or take, take personal care attendance, those are also qualified when they're with the senior. So, membership for the senior center is a way to help support the senior. About the only benefit of seniorship is, or membership is you get to get elected to the board of directors. And you get to vote for the board of directors. So it's really a, a program of supporting the senior. It's twenty bucks a year, you know, and we actually have a couple of other programs, a five-dollar-a-month fund that many of them donate to as well. They go a hundred bucks, they have a five-hundred-dollar month fund. Those funds are used specifically for unbudgeted. I mean, come up with a year. Something broke, we need to buy it.
If somebody is sixty or over.
We provide, we provide services to any senior, any.
Well, I know I'd qualify then. By more than, by more than enough. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation and good luck and thank, and thank you for everything you do. That finishes and concludes the non-departmental budget work session for those, for organizations, and now we will move on to utility fund. And Mr. Rufford, seeing that you missed yesterday, you'll get to stay three hours afterwards, so Stephanie and Melanie can give you a, a recap of what they went through yesterday. Okay, you, you ready? Okay.
Not leased to, but the city owned it prior and sold it to the borough. The deed restriction restricts the use of that parcel, which is the full forty acres, including Reed At Elementary and Sohigh, for educational purposes. And at one point, they had reached out and asked whether use of that building for a Boys and Girls Club clubhouse would be considered a change of use or consistent, and we determined that it was consistent with the use of a school because so many of them are already located in schools, but. I'm going to ask that, Kyle's on the board, so let's. So the summer programs will be operated probably exclusively out of Saldana Prep for the summer camp, but during the school year, they did still operate the portable at Reed At.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Happy to be back again to conclude day two of the budget presentation. And with those presentations from the non-departmentals, we've wrapped up the general fund. We've now covered all of that territory and get to move on into some of the city's other non-general fund funds, starting with the utility department. Kyle, our public works director's here, Rob Hayes, one of our operators, long-term operators, is here as well, and they can help with some of the more detailed questions as they arise, but Melanie and I'll cover some of the big highlights. And feel free, the utility fund is broken into three different divisions, water, sewer, and wastewater treatment. But as we go through these, feel free to ask questions as they come up related to any of the utility operations. But I'd like to start on page sixty-three of the budget document, which is the overview page for the utility fund. This is all of those three divisions combined. And this is the summary page that shows the prior year actuals in FY nineteen and twenty, the current year budget in FY twenty-one, as well as our proposals for FY twenty-two and twenty-three. In terms of total operating revenues, we project them to be up, up slightly this year from the prior year. Two and a, two-point-five-four percent increase for FY twenty-two and less than one percent increase the following year. There's no rate increases tied to any of this budget. So if you remember, the city had concluded several years of pre-planned utility rate increases. Last year FY twenty-one, there was no rate increase, and nor are there rate increases proposed and built into this budget for twenty-two or twenty-three. One of the things we are going to look at is an updated rate study. And there may be some planning funds available from the DEC we're going to try and pursue that would allow us to bring somebody back on board, take a look at our rate structure, and do some analysis to see if we're where we should be in terms of, of rates. But this budget doesn't anticipate any new increases to the rates for either FY twenty-two or twenty-three. In terms of operating expenditures, you can see it's actually slightly down in twenty-two as well as twenty-three. Small differences there, but, but overall expenditures are not projected to increase. And just as a reminder, these are operating expenditures only, not including capital projects, which will be dealt with separately by the council through the capital budget process. We've got highlighted here, if you look down to line item four-six-nine-five-oh, that category is called non-operating transfers out. That's the capital budgeting that we do every year after the operating budget is adopted. So you can see in FY nineteen actual, we transferred out three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars worth of capital projects. FY twenty was a little bit down. It was a hundred and thirty thousand. And, and in FY twenty-one, because we're just showing you what was budgeted, we're not including the transfers out that the city had, city council had approved for mid-year appropriations. There have been some, they're just not included in this column because this column is just showing us what was included in the budget document. But if you look down all the way at the bottom, we show there the beginning fund balance and the ending fund balance. Those first two columns are actuals. Those are true known numbers. The third column is what was FY twenty-one budgeted, and you see we began the year at the two-point-five million mark and we're projected to grow that fund balance in the current fiscal year we're in. That'll be reduced slightly because of some projects we're doing right now. One is the council approved the design funding for the screw press to replace our very end-of-it's-life belt press. Rob would probably talk about that machinery for a while if we were interested, but you guys recently approved the funding for that project. That would impact where this ending fund balance is projected to be. But in general, when the city did its prior rate study, two-point-five million was identified as a target. That's a number internally that we have been discussing in terms of our target for where the utility fund balance should be, and we're right on track. We're there right now and projected to be right in the range around that number based on the capital needs of the utility department from year to year. So we've got the five-year capital plan. Kyle and Melanie have a spreadsheet looking forward where we try to match up projects that are on, on the five-year capital plan, kind of align them and, and keep in our mind a projected range of where the fund balance is going to be moving forward to make, to ensure that we're, what we have in this utility fund balance is going to be sufficient for the capital projects that we bring you and identify in that five-year plan moving forward. Let me pause here and see if there are any questions on this overview summary page.
Mr. Chelsom?
Thank you to the city manager. So interpreting the way this budget is structured and the way we fund our capital projects, in addition to the fees covering the day-to-day operating costs of water and sewer, any of that capital infrastructure is also being pulled out through that non-operating transfer process. So the, the capital cost is basically being shouldered through user fees as well on our sewer-water infrastructure in the city. Has that always been the case, or has, has there ever been a point historically at which the city council from the general budget would, would fund some of that capital cost? So to reduce that a little bit for those that are on water sewers, not bearing all the capital costs in addition to the operating costs of that infrastructure?
Not, not to my knowledge. I think we've generally tried to keep the utility fund supporting utility operations, so being supported through user fees. The people that are utilizing water and sewer services would, would pay for those services.
Correct. So as far as I'm aware, it would be, it would be the city's intention that that be the case, both for operations and capital. And when we have projects that encompass both, any of our major road upgrades, when we're redoing the road, whether it's Cobuck or Binkley, there's going to be some utility infrastructure work that we have an opportunity to get in there and update as well. Those costs, those pieces of the project are always separated so that the street, curb, sidewalk portions of the project are billed to the general fund. Any of the water, wastewater pieces of the project are billed separately to the utility fund.
And I guess operationally that makes sense. I was just thinking like, for some of those capital projects, they can be pretty big and it's, I, I could just see that being tough because I mean, our water sewer fees are already pretty expensive and, you know, if we have a pretty big capital project that comes out, my perspective being a resident of the city, it'd be nice if we could take some of that cost and shift it to some of the sales tax that's paid for by people from outside the city, so kind of offload that burden from our city residents a little bit where possible.
I think it would be high, pretty unusual to do that. This fund, like our airport fund, is identified as, as a fee-based fund. And so while, while sales tax contribute towards improvements that are utilized generally, we have a pretty significant portion of the city's essentially residential mostly. Most of the commercial areas are served, but we have a lot of residential areas that are not currently on city water or sewer. So using property tax or a general sales tax, it's always been treated as separate from those and, and the capital investments were supported by the users themselves.
Mr. Rufford?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if there was any sort of expansion of services, that's not technically included in any sort of revenues or anything for this. I'm just thinking along the lines, there seems like there's been conversations with some entities outside of city limits to expand water and sewer coverage. It's hard to plan for in this budget, I would assume.
We don't project any growth in terms of number of users that would be tied to potential expansions because we don't have any current expansions planned right now. If there was going to be some additional users or if the council had approved projects to grow our system outside or in new areas, then we would look at maybe what that development was going to be, who those users might be. There's none of that planned at this time, just because we don't have any of those projects on our books. And traditionally, expansion of the system, unless it's a very dense development, it's going to be difficult to pencil out. So really, we're going to see growth in revenue from new users that can tie into the system where we currently have infrastructure. It's often a bridge too far to be able to extend a main line, for example, unless there's quite a dense bit of development on the end with a high number of users to be able to make that pencil out for the system on the whole. But that's a long answer to your very simple question, which is that no, there's none of that built into this.
Mr. Carey?
My manager is wondering, do we have any individuals that live outside the city, but they get utility services from us?
We do. We've got about twenty-five properties that are either on water or sewer or both. And those are, there have been a couple instances where, at the property owner's request, they got, came to the city, got permission from the city council to extend to meet their needs. Most of them are places where we already exist. So for example, a lot of those folks are along Funny River in that, in that section that's between the city and the city. As we extended our services out to the airport, they were then available for folks that are adjacent to tie into.
I'm going to age myself here, but I do that all the time. I know that with some of our older bonds from the federal government, we were required, if people lived outside the city, but they were right next to us and they wanted service, we provided. When those bonds were, so my question, once those bonds were paid off, again, from twenty-plus years ago, did that requirement go away? Do we still have any obligation based on funders for bonds, again, particularly the federal government, where we would be expected to provide service to someone outside the city if they were, again, right next to us and they wanted it?
To the best of my knowledge, we're not, the city is not required to, to serve property. To the best of my knowledge, we're not, the city is not required to, to serve properties outside our city limits because we're not a utility that's regulated by the regulatory authority like a gas or an electric utility might be. So it's, it's, to the best of my knowledge, and I don't know unless Kyle has, has other information, the city's not obligated to do so. Like I said, traditionally where, where the main line already exists and we may have pre-installed stub outs for future tie-ins, it's, it's really easy to accommodate those type of additional users and, and it may benefit our system to bring on those additional customers. It becomes more difficult talking about it further extending the, the system beyond where it currently exists to look at that cost benefit. And it would be a decision of the council. I'm not aware of any obligations to do so.
Excellent. And the main discussion I heard on that was in the Ridgeway area, again, the other side of Knight Drive. But, and I thank you for...
Any other questions?
So we will, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll move forward now into some of the more details. And here, as I mentioned, we've got, within our utility department, a utility manager and several operators. And although they tend to specialize in different pieces of our system, some folks maybe are highly supposed to specialize at the wastewater treatment plant versus some of our operators who are much more knowledgeable, spend more of their time out in the field. They all have an opportunity to serve all of these three utility divisions. And as with the previous discussions, we've got the, the staff allocation table here that shows you how we divide the folks' time up between these three divisions. But they're all inclusive of the utility department and the utility fund as a whole. Starting on page 66 and 67, we can speak to some of the specific items in this budget in the water department, and I'll ask Melanie to cover some of those highlights.
So included in the FY '22 budget, there is a non-recurring charge in here for a one-time purchase for the replacement of the chlorine analyzer. That's $18,000. Offsetting that increase is the elimination of a non-recurring charge from a prior year of about $11,000. We were also able to decrease some chemicals due to the chlorine analyzer replacement, and then we made some adjustments to lab supplies and, and other things. Overall, the increase to materials and supplies is about $2,600. And if, if anybody has any questions concerning the, the one-time replacements or upgrades or whatever that we're doing, I'd, I'd probably refer those over to Kyle and Rob. They can answer the specifics on those. Also included in the water budget is a reduction in the contracted services account, and that was just basically eliminating something that was included in the prior year that was a non-recurring charge. It was the meter reading software upgraded that we did, upgrade that we did in, in the current year. Really, that's the highlights to the water account. There's not many other changes.
Is there any questions from the council? I do, go ahead.
How's the search going for a manager?
It's underway. It's going well. We're moving forward in the process. Thank you.
I do have one question. I'm not sure, maybe Kyle can answer it. I've noticed in driving around town, there's quite a bit of, quite a few of the fire hydrants covered up with bags indicating that they're probably out of services. We have something going on, or is there going to be an issue that needs to be addressed in the budget to replace?
There is. We do have a, we are systematically replacing some hydrants. We, we do budget for hydrant parts to repair some hydrants. We do have, Rob can, can talk more specifically, but we probably have 90%, maybe 85% all of one make and manufacture, American darlings. We still have some newer hydrants that we're systematically replacing. So when we do street projects, when we do, when we have the opportunity and efficiencies, we'll, we'll replace those hydrants. The ones that you see that are bagged are inoperable, like you, like you say. Rob, how many, do you know offhand how many hydrants you got bagged or?
I think there's five today.
So we've probably got five out of 390 hydrants or so that are bagged, so we need to get some, either get some parts for them, or they've been damaged and require some, some digging or some, you know, more extensive maintenance.
So is that, that covered in this current budget or the, well, current budget or the new budget coming on June 1st or July 1st?
I'll have to verify exactly which hydrants are bagged. We should be able to address them in this budget, I think so. That's typically what we do over the winter. Sometimes we have some freezing issues. We'll see a line item for RV antifreeze. There's some, there's a, there's a weep hole in the bottom of the, they're a dry barrel hydrant. Obviously, in our climate, you can't have a wet barrel or it'll freeze. So some of them, once they get used by the fire department or by us flushing mains, they won't back rain and then they'll have a freezing problem. So we have to, we have to add some RV antifreeze and/or bag them if we need to do some work on them. So the intent would be to address those bagged hydrants with this budget, yes.
Thank you.
One follow-up question?
Go ahead, Mr. Chilton.
Do we have a schedule and supporting budget to support repainting those fire hydrants? Because there's a good number of them that look pretty decrepit, and I didn't know if that was like a one-time thing, they got painted years ago and there's no plan to ever touch them up again, or how that works?
It's, it's not something that's been on our radar lately, and so the answer is no. We don't currently have a plan for it nor a, nor an existing budget. I imagine the, the labor is the driving factor in that effort rather than the materials. But that's something that we can put on our radar and kind of put a...
Yeah, I mean, if we could, if it's just a matter of just paying for the materials and maybe we could utilize some of Andrew's labors during the summer, if, you know, whenever they have downtime, like, hey, go take four hours and spray and paint a hydrant here and there. I'd love to see that because it's kind of embarrassing how I've had a lot of those look, so.
Something I can take, take a look into.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kerry?
I just want to share some information that those new hydrants that don't have any of that red, white, blue paint, the others make fun of them because they are not painted. So I just want to let you know, and I know it's a, it's a matter of emotion, but the new hydrants, they're constantly being laughed at by the painted hydrants. Thank you.
The homeowners that, or property owners that, in front of some of those hydrants, could they paint them on their own?
Possibly. You know, we, we, that's a program that we might be able to look into. We do, we do partner with folks for snow removal and such. We have had some inquiries about that in the past few years, nothing recently. I think the last time that happened, we kept it simple and had a discussion about using the correct paint and doing it safely and not creating a problem in the future, you know, you know, not making it, making it any worse. So that's possibly a program we could look into.
I'll do a purple one in front of my house.
Yeah, there, there is, there are some constraints. I should, I should note that, you know, consistency in, in hydrants is a good thing in both their color. There's recommended colors, American Public Works Association, you know, need to be recognizable. Firemen need to have, you know, they need to be able to find them, look the same, have the bike flagging. There's right-hand opens, there's left-hand opens, things of that nature. So consistency is definitely a, something that, that you strive for in, in fire suppression hydrants.
Thank you. Ms. Hutchings?
Well, I just remember the last time I saw Andy painting on the hydrants, and I thought the mayor did it at that time. Is that correct, Mr. Kerry?
The mayor did it for seven years. For, and I was just gonna mention, it was exactly 20 years ago. It was 2001. It was a response to the trade center's destruction. And in two very nice sunny weekends, this whole community got out and painted all the hydrants that we knew of. For the following seven years, the mayor went around and touched them up and reported to the council. I am aware, as I was told, I ignored it. Technically, they're all supposed to be a standard color that we're not. It's not red, white, and blue. But I don't know that the feds have come and done anything to us about them. But it has been 12 years since anyone was going around and doing the little red, white, and blue on them. It might be an interesting thing. It's 20 years, but I want to be real careful of getting too involved in that. I just, I'd say again, those blank ones are just, they're making fun of them, something terrible.
Moving right along?
There's a, there's more interest in this topic than we anticipated, so we'll be happy to do some research and bring back some options.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll commit to looking into all of the above.
Ask John to put it in part of our city.
We can't give John extra things while he's on vacation. That wouldn't be fair. Transition us next to Melanie. Did that close out water, water division? Moving on to the sewer fund, portion of the fund, which is on page 69. And then turn the page to the detail sheets.
So the highlights in the sewer department. Let's see, in the materials and supplies account, we have some spare pump, spare pumps for lift stations that are fairly consistent in, in cost each year. We, we did a, some other ones in the prior year FY '21 that were about $1,000 difference in cost, but I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kyle and Rob, but I think after we replaced these, we should be pretty caught up on having spare parts for all of the different types of pumps that we have around the city. So I think the idea was just to have some spares on the shelf in case one of them somewhere went down. Let's see, in small tools, we eliminated some hearing protection and communication equipment from the prior year, so that was, that's the reduction of the $5,000 that you see there. In contracted services, we did include installation of an auto transfer switch, particularly lift station, and that's a non-recurring item that will fall off the next year. As far as the specifics on that, if there's any questions, I'd refer that over to Kyle or Rob. And pretty much, that is about the gist of, of this department. There's really not any other big changes. It's fairly consistent from year to year except for the non-recurring items that, that pop up.
Any questions from the council?
Next is moving into the wastewater treatment plant. I'll just give the plug if you haven't done the tour. I know some of you have. I think it's really cool. My sixth grader got to do it this, this year, and I, I'm way more excited about than she was, but I'm sure she found pieces of it really fascinating as well. But I know that if you were interested, if you wanted to see the technology that we have there, if you haven't been since the upgrades, I know we're all pretty proud of this plant and they'd be happy to schedule you a walk-through, I'm sure.
Quick question on that. When were the upgrades done? Because I did the tour, I think like two and a half years ago, and it was awesome. It was super interesting, and I'm just curious if I missed that.
So since then, we've got new high-speed turbo blowers, which are very exciting. They're, they're getting implemented in communities across America and everybody's achieving cost savings from an energy perspective. We also got new mechanisms and a clarifier, so the big swing arms that do the scum and sludge. And that's about it that you get to visually see, but the, the high-speed turbo blowers are, are a pretty neat piece of equipment, so. And, and it's also just, it's neat to see the process and the, you know, the technology that, that these guys have implemented down there for, you know, fine-tuning and controlling that plant, both, you know, onsite and remotely. Rob has the ability on his iPhone right now to monitor nearly everything that, that's going on and respond to it, which is, which is pretty amazing. So it's, it is, like Stephanie said, and, and we love giving tours because we're, we are proud of it. We're proud of the, the way it performs and, and we're good stewards to the environment, so.
Great work. Thank you.
Are we seeing any cost savings in electricity and natural gas and stuff for these, since we've had these upgrades in?
We are. Unfortunately, there's a slight offset. Part of those upgrades was new air handling and air exchanges to meet codes, up-to-date codes for, you know, employee safety and some confined space, but also just inside buildings. So, so we achieved overall a significant cost savings. We do have that calculator, I don't have it with me, but we were saving something on the magnitude of 40,000 or 50,000, I think, in electricity, but we were up, you know, 15 or 20. I can't, I'll have to get those numbers for you, but we increased some of our gas usage for heating because of the air exchanges in the buildings and some of the HVAC controls that we put into place. But from an electrical perspective, we are saving a significant amount of energy with the, the turbo blowers. Melanie's a winner, Brow, but I, I'll, I'll give you rough numbers only at, at, at tonight's work session, but we can, we can look that up. We did do the calculation post-project, and we are achieving good, good energy cost savings.
Thank you. Mr. Kerry?
I was wondering, what, what's our capacity in terms of, how much are we using of what we potentially could provide if necessary?
Good, great question, Councilman Kerry. Our plan is approved at 1.02 million gallons per day. At the, we average probably, and Rob can, can detail this a little bit more, probably a half a million. You know, it, it goes down into the high threes and fours during the peak of inflow and infiltration with breakup and other such high-flow events, six, maybe 700s, is that about right, Rob? So we, we have a pretty adequate capacity for growth. Can I follow up?
Go ahead.
And it may not apply, I'm not trying to see. I know in, in terms of capacity of other, like, generation facilities for electricity that you have a range, but there's sort of that sweet spot, that you don't do the maximum and you definitely don't want to do the minimum. Is there such a thing on the wastewater treatment? Is, is there a particular num, excuse me, is there a particular number of volume that is more efficient for it to, to be running, or does that type of issue apply?
That's a great question. I think that, I think the level of effort required to, to maintain the biological processes that we're trying to achieve, I think that there's, there probably is a sweet spot. Rob has enough time and history, or, you know, perhaps I'll let him, him talk about that. You know, we are, you know, that's our permitted level, and, and we're able to accomplish all of our regulatory requirements, you know, within that range and even beyond, probably. The level of effort that it takes to, to meet those regulatory requirements probably does change because, you know, it's a, it's an activated sludge biological process that we're trying to achieve down there, and that is influenced by, by flows, but also unique events can, can happen. You know, if a floor drain issue happens, if something gets dumped, and it does happen, you know, these guys will know immediately if some anomaly happens and they have to hop to it and make particular changes to the plant. I think recently we had a filamentous issue that was occurring where they make, they make adjustments to the, the processes to, to have the activated sledge do its thing and, and crank things out. And Rob, you wanna, you wanna talk a little bit about plant operations?
I'm sure there is a sweet spot. We just make operational changes when, like Kyle said, when things happen, like the filamentous, a lot of runoff comes from the streets and that affects treatment, or if somebody was to dump a whole lot of glycol somewhere, we could see that too. But we have the ability to bring basins online or take them offline to adjust for the amount of flow. So yes, there's a sweet spot, but it can, it's pretty wide.
So a good example would be the belt filter press and how often we need to decant the, the digester and, and, and press sludge. You know, there's probably a sweet spot where, you know, we have a minimal amount of operations, but as things change, we may have to ramp that up. And currently with the filamentous, we're doing it how often?
Running the belt press.
Yeah.
Or just about.
Just about every day, yeah. So with, with some plant issues. So I would say op, operation, operational costs and efforts, you know, and, and then you're, we're focused on working in the plant rather than, you know, maybe working on hydrant parts or, or other such things. We have to adjust accordingly.
Thank you both. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions? Seeing that, we'll move on.
Does that wrap up utilities? No, you, a couple highlights for the wastewater treatment plant, please.
Sure, there's, again, some one-time purchases, some spare PLCs at the Raz-Waz control building so that they can have on hand in the event of a hardware failure. Offsetting that though, or some reductions from things purchased in the prior year that had been budgeted in the prior year, and then of course, anticipating some increases in lab supplies. Contracted services includes the design and installation of some confined space anchoring equipment at the wastewater treatment plant. And then offsetting that increase is eliminating conversion of the cold storage to warm storage building that was included in the prior year. So that's actually a reduction that you'll see in that account. Yesterday, we talked about insurance rates and property values and the fact that rates have gone up in, for property and our, many of our facilities have been appraised, and the utility department is one of the buildings that was appraised and saw a big increase in, in replacement cost, and so therefore you'll see an increase in the utility insurance. in replacement cost, and so therefore, you'll see an increase in the utility insurance budget line item. It's pretty substantial. Also, in this department for FY twenty-three, we did eliminate something that's no longer needed in this year, and that's belt press parts because of the screw press project that we're doing. That was taken out, and the one-time purchase that we had previously done. And then the interest payments on the DEC loan, that's included in here, and that's a flat, the same cost every single year, it's just the difference between interest and principal will change as the time goes on. That's pretty much the highlights of the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, and that's, that's a good example of some of the uncertainty we'll face in a two-year budgeting process, is right now, we've got design funding and are still working through kind of the design of replacing the belt press with the screw press. Already, we're trying to look ahead to FY twenty-three, and where we would normally budget for replacement parts for the belt press, we had a conversation about whether or not that's appropriate. Will we have a new screw press online by then? What will those parts potentially be needed? But these are the kind of conversations we have that are new to us with a two-year budget, making some assumptions that in the past, we didn't have to do on a maybe shorter time horizon.
Ms. Carey?
Didn't mean to cut you off. Do we, for our size and for our needs, are we at the highest technology-wise, are we, you know, at the best? And in the next five to ten years, is there technology-wise, is there something else coming down the pike that we can anticipate?
Thank you for the question. From a technology perspective, I would say that we are as advanced, if not more, than many of our peers with the technology that's available and in place in the industry today. From a specific, you know, standpoint at our plant, this belt press replacement is a good example of our systematic approach and proactive replacement of equipment there. We, I'll admit that we continue to use the word screw press, but we will diligently look at all technologies available. That's part of the design process, is to analyze the options out there, prioritize criteria that's important to us, energy consumption, maintenance, warranty, labor effort to run the, run the equipment, et cetera. So we are, I would say, if, we are on par, if not probably a bit more technologically, I guess, implemented at our facilities.
Five, ten years from now? Will it still be the same, basically the same?
Yes, you know, I think, and today's discussion on our budget's a good example, you know, Melanie is a huge, you know, asset to all things city, but, you know, we've got a really good program. We talked about, we talked about looking for a grant to do a rate study. You know, that looks at not just, you know, revenues and expenditures, it looks at rate setting, looks at rate affordability, but we have to forward, forward-plan capital projects. So I think that in the next five, ten years, we may, you know, we will be continuing to review and implement new changes as they come available and as it fits our budget and capabilities, so we expect to continue to be proactive.
Just to add to what Kyle just said, the other thing is the permit renewal process that we're nearing the end of, and whether that'll have operational or facility upgrade changes at the plant, whether implementing new pH controls is something we're going to be doing. Also, we've had the studies looking at our source water and talking about water quality that might also be related, so just things that continue to be within our planning horizon to keep an eye on that may eventually result in new projects or upgrades. Any other questions before we leave the utility department? Great, thank you. Thanks for coming, Rob.
Yeah, I'm in it. Rob and his team are doing our flushing hydrants this week, so they're improving our water quality, so we'll wish you luck. Scuba, Rob?
Kyle gets to stay because he's the airport manager, and we're talking about the airport fund next.
Right. Thank you, Rob.
So airport fund starts on page seventy-seven of the document. As I mentioned, when we implemented these new staff allocation tables, this was the one that came to mind as a good example of that, because, like I said, there's many folks that contribute their time and their duties from different departments to support the airports, maintenance, operations, and administration. Looking over at page seventy-eight, you can kind of see generally our revenues. This is the summary page for the airport fund. Long-term land leases provide the bulk of that revenue for the airport fund, and we've seen that grow over the last decade with bringing the new, you know, there was some replating, and there was some new marketing of new lease lots, there's been a lot of hanger construction, we've got new tie-down spaces that are available. So as, as part of implementing the airport's long-term plan, creating some more of these spaces that are available, we've seen folks come in and develop those, and that's, that's been really key to getting the airport fund in the black, which was not the case, I think, a decade ago. So that's been great. This item, I'll just flag rent, three-seven-one-fifty, that is actually a transfer, it's, it's when we're using airport land for non-airport purposes. So Rotary Park is on airport land. We, the city, essentially leased that land from the airport, so the general fund transfers, and again, this is consistent with use of airport land for airport purposes. It can be leased to other things, but needs to be compensated, whether that's us leasing it out to a private individual or ourselves, in this case, the parks, parks department. The shop, yep, thanks, where our mechanics are at the end of Funny River Road would be another instance of the general fund, essentially leasing land from the airport fund. You can see the fund balance, actually more recently than a decade. If you look at FY nineteen actual, it was a little bit in the negative, and we had facilitated an inter-fund transfer, essentially a loan, a zero-interest loan from the general fund to the airport fund. But more recently, the airport fund is in the black, and it's projected to be self-sustaining at the level we're operating now. Moving forward, I'll ask Melanie to highlight.
Okay, so as far as expenditures go, pretty much everything that's in the notes, I think, is probably worth highlighting. For travel and training, we did restore to pre-COVID levels, like we did in several other departments, and then we also increased in FY twenty-two for some training that the airport manager typically does every two to three years. In the prior year, in FY twenty-one, because of the new building that's built out near the airport, we did add electricity and natural gas, our estimated budget for that. We did have to increase those slightly for FY twenty-two because we were off a little bit, but we neglected to add for a budget for phone line and water and sewer out there, so that's new to the FY twenty-two budget. And the advertising and promotion budget, we budget for airfare expenditures each year, and in FY twenty-two, I've been told there is going to be no airfare, so we took the funding for that out in FY twenty-two. Contracted services, which is the next account to highlight, we have an amount in there for grass mowing, and in FY twenty-one, we had budgeted to mow once a year, and this is to mow twice a year. We've decided we need to mow more than once, I guess, and we're shifting over from having our maintenance department mow, because it takes a really, really long time, and we've decided we're going to try to contract that out, so.
And this type of mowing, different from other type of mowing, is not aesthetics, it's bird maintenance, not letting it get to a certain height where that becomes a concern or a problem. It's more liability-focused, something we need to do, and it's important. We had a long-time arrangement with someone who was using that infield area, maintaining it, taking the hay, the grass. Kyle?
Yeah, it was, it was, we had a maintenance agreement with a farmer, if you will, who cultivated, Shunze cultivated, who removed the growth from the infield and used it for his purpose. I believe it was a, they paid us for the maintenance agreement.
And when it got to the point where it was no longer tenable for them to do that financially, based on what they would have to put into that space to make it worth it for them, we took that on ourselves. So this is something that we're, we're now budgeting for to have, hopefully find a contractor that can come in and do that efficiently with some bigger equipment.
Also added to the contracted services account is some additional funding for miscellaneous consulting services in FY twenty-two, and then in FY twenty-three, some marketing and promotional consulting services.
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit about that. We've got the airport master plan, which is filled with a lot of data, very technical, projects out needs based on demand of the users. It also identifies projects, capital projects. But one of the things Kyle and I have talked about over the last couple of years is the vast potential of the airport in terms of economic growth potential with the land we have, but also just kind of checking back in with the users of the airport and having a clear vision in terms of this airport and what it's, what it, what it wants to be, what our community wants it to be in the coming years. And there are, there are kind of trade events that we could be attending, there could be customers we could be marketing to even outside our community who want a small airport like ours, and really, these, this funding would be used, I think, to embark on kind of a planning process where we look at opportunities at the airport, check in with, engage with stakeholders, and maybe be a little bit more intentional about who we're seeking out, what types of development we're hoping to attract, what type of users, and having a kind of a growth plan, a marketing strategy and growth plan for the airport itself. So that's what we envision using those funds for.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Oh, go ahead.
Could you give a ballpark of how much of the airport land that we could use is being used, in terms of particularly for hangars and tie-downs and those type things?
Well, maybe defer to Kyle.
Ooh, percentage that is being used is perhaps sixty-five? It depends on how you break it down, so, but, but I can tell you that we were fortunate to get in on the last few rounds of FAA grants that would fund apron expansion projects, no longer eligible, but we were able to do that, and that's, if you go out to the airport, the first part you see on the right, there's a sea of gravel. There's, I believe, probably four or five large lease lots adjacent to Funny River Road, there's probably forty in the apron that are a hundred by a hundred sized for, about the size of the hangar that folks like to build for our type of design aircraft. And then, that's only half of that gravelly area, the other half isn't even platted yet. And that's the area that's, and then there are available lease lots on the east end as well. I don't have a breakdown for you, but we have adequate capacity, we have adequate number of both lease lots and tie-downs for demand right now, and in the foreseeable future, and that's just inside the airport fence. So as you travel down Funny River Road, once you pass the river center, all of that riverfront property on the left is, was federal land given to the city for airport purposes, so it's airport land, all the way up to the shop. Bacon?
Thank you, and I must say, I really look forward to, again, the study and the work that's going to be done in terms of what the potential is. Thank you.
Ms. Hutchings?
I'm just, I'm closing budget here, and I see account number forty-five thousand, which is insurance, and I see it in the general budget, you have an expense for it, but I only see it broke out in the airport and in the different utilities. I don't see it broke out to the campground or to the parks, or is there a reason for that?
We budget all of the general fund insurance, all in one account. It's located in the non-departmental account.
Would you break it out in the utilities? That's why I was curious, why it's not worked out in the different departments?
Well, we allocate the percentage, or the portion to utilities that relates to utilities because we want the utility fund to stand on its own. Same with the airport fund. The general fund is just, a lot of the things that aren't, a lot of the things we just budget in non-departmental, we haven't actually broken it down on a departmental basis.
Is not really something that's broke out, it's your general.
It, correct, it's located in the non-departmental account. However, workers' comp is the one insurance that we have broken out by department.
And so I see a good example, like on page seventy-one, we've got insurance attributed to the sewer. It is, it is common with our three utility divisions to break things out, even though they're in the same fund. So we've got all of our staff broken out, a lot of the software things you'll see are, like the GIS software, it's fifty-fifty or it's a third, so I think it's just pretty standard for us, even though those three divisions are within the fund, to try to really clearly delineate between the two and attribute cost among the three.
I know, I guess I was just looking at how much does the insurance cost us for, you know, like our fun things, our campgrounds, our parks, the sports center, you know, is that, it's just an accounting thing.
Yeah, so even if it's not maybe something that we would recommend putting in the budget, we could get that document for the council so that you'd be able to see that information. Because we do have, in terms of coming up at our, arriving at our rates, we do have that breakdown by facility that we could share with the council, Melanie?
Just to carry on with what Ms. Hutchings was saying is, we might want to break that insurance out for like the sports center, because then you could work in, that's a cost that should go into the fees that's being charged. You know, if we're paying a hundred thousand dollars a year for insurance at the sports center, you know, that should be a cost that's allocated to the users, just like it is in the utilities.
We haven't, we haven't set that level of expectation on any of our general fund items. The library would be a great example of that, you know, where we, we have not set a benchmark of having the library cover a certain portion of its cost. Instead, we, we just have not embarked on that type of exercise, so we'd be happy to provide some more information on that.
And then I just received an email here a little bit, and I think you got it, too, that Homer Electric will be sending us two checks for twenty-three thousand dollars for capital credit refunds.
I had one in my box this morning for eighteen thousand.
Didn't even tell me.
Twenty-three thousand dollars isn't enough. Go ahead, Mr. Carey.
Just wondering in terms of sort of process, do we every three to five years, do we go out for bids on insurance, or do we do it more frequently, or what do we do to, again, get the best rate possible on insurance?
We do, we submit an application each year to our insurance company with all of the information to get our new rates, and then every three years, we notify our current insurance company that we are going out to bid, and then we solicit rates from the other, they're both pools.
Right.
We solicit insurance rates from the other one, and then we go with whichever one is the best rates. And we generally sign a three-year contract with them. It enables them to, or us to keep our rates within ten percent. They can't increase it more than ten percent overall for the year. I think this is the, this is the third year, I believe, in this, in this contract. So previously, for many, many years, we had AMLJIA, and I think it was in about, maybe two thousand and finish, we switched over to APEI and saved a whole bunch of money. And then we've been with APEI until about three years ago, and then we went out to bid that time, obviously, and AMLJIA was less, so we've switched back to AMLJIA now, and we'll be this next year going out to bid again.
Excellent, thank you.
It was a good position to be in because we were happy with the service we were getting from APEI. We were comfortable with our prior relationship with AMLJIA, and that allowed us to have a good working relationship with both and really kind of make that decision based on cost savings.
I think it's pretty typical for municipalities to go out to bid every few years, and they've both been really great to work with, so.
Any other question? Vice Mayor Parker?
Couple of questions. Mr. Baker, you mentioned that land and property that appear on the campus or how it's going to burn right now, are you saying that with, you're seeing the property at the airport?
Anecdotally, no, I think that we've, we've seen consistent growth. I don't know that we've seen a rate of leasing go up. I think the airport's just been in a period of growth for some time. I have heard anecdotally of some hanger sales, you know, existing structures, that doesn't involve the city unless there's a lease transfer. For new leases, I think we're probably on par with, with a positive slope, so we're So we're continuing to see growth out there. I do think there's been, I know that there's been some new construction lately. There's been one six-unit T-hanger built, and there's another six-unit T-hanger being prepared to be built. And my understanding is that the gentleman building those has continued to sell those individual units over the last year, and even as recently as last week told me he was continuing to see success.
One additional question. At recent airport, when you were doing spring, Scotty and Kyle talked about it, Melanie and Kyle and the airport. Have you ever listened to mail contact bases, so that we've been spoke to on the street assessment?
It's been a while. Scotty?
I ran some just generic numbers. I think I even brought up the airport commission on, you know, kind of equipment and, you know, what kind of borough rates, and it's, it's pretty extreme. You can see our black door red, which we, we house source our product from. We adjusted a few things, brought on a full-time layer guy and refocused some efforts. And I think the overall, as much snow as we had this winter, I mean, we did back to in town airport, in town airport, in four months. And I think the overall, everybody was pretty pleased out there.
And then, once that assessment is completed and the pavement has been rolled out, are they responsible for that assessment to continue paying for ongoing maintenance? Or do we take over all maintenance costs after that point?
Nope. Once it's, um, once anything is built to our standards, whether it's through an assessment district or a new developer comes in and, for example, built legacy loop geranium in those streets, once that infrastructure's built, we've got a short warranty period where we make sure it was kind of put in correctly, and then it's accepted into our maintenance program. There's no additional costs needed from that neighborhood. And the only other thing I'll mention is that special assessment districts, by definition, are for those projects that really are primarily benefiting those people adjacent to it. So collector streets that are used widely, such as Binkley and Cobuck, those are typically city projects, capital projects, that the city pays for through our capital budget. These are really smaller, really neighborhood projects where primarily those people that live there are going to benefit the most.
Sure. So I'm thinking more of like the side streets that aren't really thorough for us, like maybe Rockwell or Coral. Like if those eventually get to the point where those need to be ripped up and repaved, would the cost of that be an additional assessment on the people that live on those side streets? Or would the city pay for the repaving of that entirely ourselves?
It can, it can depend. You know, it's all about prioritization, and opinions may differ. So the SAD process allows a group of benefited property owners to approach the city to say, this is important enough for us to see happen now that we're willing to put skin in the game and to fund a portion of it.
Sure.
There can be, so there can be property owner initiated SADs, there can be city initiated SADs, where the city says, you know, this street, we want to, we want the property owners to contribute to the capital cost of making the improvements, and here's what it's going to cost, and here's what we're going to do. The city could also elect to just do it. The city can say, we're spending this much on maintenance, we believe that it's going to benefit the city and the community as a whole for the following reasons, and so we're going to appropriate general fund money, or grant money, or whatever source, and just do it.
So I guess I'm just trying to understand what the more common approach has typically been. So like for those paved streets, they've already been built out, they've gone through that process. Again, like Coral or Rockwell, those are great examples. If those neighborhoods decide that they don't really care about those street conditions, and you know, goes on another 10, 15, 20 years, and that there's, you know, potholes that look like the moon, as a city, are we going to choose to just let that go until the neighborhood decides, okay, enough is enough, we're going to come and request an SAD? Or are we going to go to them and say, okay, we're going to cover the cost of this and just repave those ourselves out of the city budget?
I think it depends when we get to that point. I mean, I don't know that a lot of our neighborhoods are old enough yet that they've experienced that need to be complete redos.
Sure.
So we've been kind of, Scotty's crew has got a really cool infrared machine that can now kind of patch in a more sophisticated way, kind of potholes, and hopefully have a more than short-term fix. And it would be a discussion with the council about where those priorities lie, and we would come to you with information about the costs of maintenance, or if we had concerns that it was getting into such disrepair that it was going to threaten the integrity of the street. You know, oftentimes, we want to try and head things off. But I don't know that we've got neighborhoods that I can think of that were in that scenario. It was, it's been mostly our main collectors that have reached that point that needed to be really reconstructed. And I will say, it's also fairly common with folks that live on streets where they're seeking improvements, to come to have conversations with, you know, city manager, or the planning department, or the public works department, and try and advocate for projects to be put on the city's capital priority list. It just means that street is going to compete with Mary Dale and the sports center and all of the other priorities that the council would have an opportunity to establish in our five-year plan.
Okay.
But it is typical that both minor and major maintenance is a priority of the city, that the city takes care of. So transition improvements, gravel the pavement, lighting, you know, at the burrow, there's use ads and re-ads, those kind of transitions to new infrastructure, those are typically, well, sometimes looked at from an SAD perspective, but both minor and major maintenance is typically taken on by the city.
A number of years ago, and probably just a couple of years ago, we had that street assessment done. And going through that study, there was some streets that I would totally disagree with them that said that they don't need any maintenance right now. One of them that I drive over every day. So I'm not sure how good that street assessment was done a few years ago, but there is definitely some streets around here that need work.
Next, second to last fund we'll talk about is the equipment replacement fund. Thank you, Andrew, for sticking with us. It's time to get to your agenda item. We talked probably a little bit about some of these things as we were going through the different department budgets in terms of new equipment. And I'd like to ask Melanie to explain the equipment replacement fund, how that works, and then highlight some of the new requests that are built into this two-year budget.
Sure. So the equipment replacement fund is considered an internal service fund, and the expenditures in that fund are charged to the departments that use that fund. So the equipment replacement fund purchases equipment for use by other departments, and those departments pay for those pieces of equipment over their useful lives. And so the only expenditure, because this is an internal service fund, and the expenditures are actually, we record them as assets, the only actual expenditure in this fund is depreciation. However, this budget authorizes the purchase of several pieces of equipment. And we can just go down through each of the pieces of equipment, and if there's any questions, I think I have the answers to many of them, but if not, hopefully Scotty and Andrew can chime in. In the notes down below, we address each of them. There's a replacement truck for the police chief. The current truck that he's driving is a 2009 truck. This would be a replacement of that truck, and his old truck would shift over then to the streets department for an extra truck for them. It also includes the replacement of an animal control officer truck. Her truck is currently, that she's driving, is a 2002 truck. That truck would shift over to the parks, and parks would then plan on getting rid of some of their older vehicles. They tend to get a lot of hand-me-downs from other departments. Also included in this budget is a replacement trailer for the shop. The trailer that they're using right now is actually a 1978 trailer that was homemade. So we're pretty frugal with the equipment. Also included is a replacement loader-mounted snow blower attachment, and this is one I would refer to Scotty to answer, because he's got a plan for this one that I didn't quite follow.
Current blowers, you see on the front of our loaders, a 2007 Kodiak blower, and our backup is a 1978 Oshkosh blower, which is an amazing piece of equipment. Parts and pieces are being really hard to find. So our plan would be, the same blower we carried, the loader would carry the same blower. If it's in Arbor Street, we don't have problems with Kodiak, you can just walk over to Arbor Street, and the new unit would actually have snow and milk cord, it's white fire. Drop the other blower, pull in the berm, look up the new blower, and you can go back out the street. Just a backup plan. We would put our Kodiak in our backup, the new blower, the Geranium's blower, and then we do have a blower at the airport, but it's just a backup plan for parts and pieces. We lost a bearing late in season this year with all the snow we were blowing. That port loader moved hundreds of thousands of tons of snow over here. And so we were down to our 1978 Oshkosh, and got through the season, doing some work at Sohigh, and doing some of the field stuff, and then we lost some parts and pieces for that, and we're still struggling to find some parts and pieces. It's just a, you know, upgrade for 78s.
Yeah, it's a real, I mean, it's a real continuity of operations issue, especially when you get to the day when the crew is in town and they're going to clear the berm. And then I drove by one day, and Scotty was there, and they were, they were having mechanical issues, and I know that that's, you know, not something that folks want to see, so.
Go ahead.
Thanks. I don't have a problem with any of these capital acquisitions. After we begin the next fiscal year, are we going to be going out to bid since there is a backlog on getting equipment? So we can, we can get in the queue? I know there's problems with getting vehicles and equipment.
Scotty handles all of that for us.
Yeah, I know. I'm just doing my due diligence, but I don't worry about prices. You know, stuff's changing rapidly through the last few months. You know, I've thought of them, we don't want to ever blow up too high. You know, I try to get all my parts and pieces as close as we can. You know, some of these numbers are good, you know, in July here. That being said, some of the things, things are changing by the day. You know, I'm trying to reach out to them, if possible, sell a crane for, you know, to improve the truck. Their prices do change, and so I guess my question to you guys do as well is, you know, it might be a good thing to reach out to all the things, build a new building, improve the budget. Is there a place that they need to put some steel price, you know? Right now, a lot of them, you know, when stuff's going to be available, and the prices are going to be, they're struggling as well. At, you know, utility beds, it's coming out of Texas, and it's going to be, it's going to be a struggle. We have done our due diligence as close as we can.
I realize you've done your due diligence, and I also know there is a problem out there, which is why, hope you're on top of it, Scotty.
And we don't go out to bid directly for each of these, right? We piggyback off of the state's contract, is that correct?
Yeah, a lot of the pricing comes through state contracts and federal contracts, you know, as much different sources out there we can use, you know, that have already gone out to bid. You know, the prices, certainly the state prices, you know, they'll change if we go back out to bid in October. Some of the police car prices, we're going in two-year cycles, so, you know, they are held to certain numbers with certain percentages for prices, you know, considering the number of them as well. A lot of it, we are able to piggyback, you know, in the process, and then think of, you know, same supply.
Mr. Carey, you got a question?
Yes. Yesterday, on national news quite a bit, there was the F-150 Ford truck that is the largest seller, and it's going electric. And so my question was, on any of these large pieces of equipment, are any of them even capable of being electric? And as a second question, do we consider anywhere the idea of electric vehicles?
I would say we are a long ways out from equipment, like a regular soldier, from being an electric.
Yeah.
You know, operating water, carrying hydraulics, you know, I would say we are a lot of years out from electric. They've got the new TAF tier four final, you know, emissions, so, you know, we're burning death on our new equipment, you know, which is bringing down the industry standards for, you know, for all that. When I add the replacements, you know, the dumb trucks, you know, tier final, tier four, and both new graders are final tier four for emissions, airport loaders, or as we might, we are starting to, you know, emissions standards. I would say we're a long ways out from electric, you know, three years, lowers, just the power we need is, is a big challenge.
Like a police vehicle?
For the light duty fleet, unfamiliar, I believe the city of Kodiak had set a target to convert their, you know, administrative vehicles to electric. And it's not something I've looked into for our fleet, but I'd be happy to. I mean, it may align with some of our goals of sustainability, and certainly fleet management is something that Scotty deals with quite a bit. And we'd be happy to look into that.
I'd appreciate that quite a bit, in that I don't think we'll find anything that's closed yet. But when someone asks about it, it's nice to be able to say, we've looked at that, and we found that, you know, there's an 18% difference. And again, right now, we're going to probably hold to that minus 18% of tax and funds. But it'd be nice to have at least some ballpark of figures.
I'd like to echo my support for that. I think it might make perfect sense for, like you said, administrative vehicles that aren't being out there. I'd be a little hesitant to do it with the police fleet conversion on that, but I think there's a lot of just daily light drivers that we could potentially benefit from, and again, support sustainability.
Thank you.
Moving right along.
Okay, so, let's see, next is a snow blower attachment for the multipurpose compact trailer that we purchased last year, I think it was last year. And the cost of this would be split 50/50 between the parks and the campgrounds. Also, a firewood processing attachment for the Bobcat that Andrew touched on yesterday, to help be able to process more firewood efficiently, more efficiently. Also, a used golf cart for the Sazana Creek, for Sazana Creek Park. We talked about different options there, and the golf cart seems to be the best option because it doesn't tear up the grass and it's quiet. So when there's events going on, it's not quite as noisy.
There's your first electrical vehicle.
There you go.
Oh, no, sewer treatment department has one.
Our utility department had a used golf court, used golf cart at the wastewater treatment plant that they used for taking chemicals and materials back and forth. And the first year they asked for that included in the budget, it didn't make the cut, but the second year it did. They got an actual side-by-side type utility vehicle, and I don't know what happened to that used golf cart, but.
Auction.
It went to auction, so.
It's going to, it's going to.
Beyond repair.
Don't, don't put anything, don't put your lunch in the back.
So if you can imagine our park staff at the park on a Wednesday or at a big event, there's a lot of running around. This will be quick, in and out, allow them to move around and move things around, and as I mentioned, not damage the turf, the grass in the meantime.
Next is a replacement truck for the utility fund, and that would be including the utility bed and the plow. The one they're currently using is a 2008. It would go to auction because it's evidently fairly problematic at this point. And it would also include a replacement crane for one of the trucks, and Kyle could probably pitch on that a little bit.
Sure. The primary use of the crane is for the sewer lift station work, both for clogs and issues, but then twice a year, in spring and fall, we do annual maintenance. Each lift station has two pumps. We have 16 lift stations, so that's 32 pumps. We pull them out, we got varying depths, 30 feet, a little bit deeper, a little bit shallower. So we have to, you got to take a crane down and hook onto it, and pull them up through guide rails, and do some cleaning, and put it back down. So that's the primary use of that truck-mounted crane that we use for, at the utility department.
I think that pretty much covers FY '22. Then FY '23, we're back to replacing some patrol vehicles. We have those kind of cycling out, a lot of the older ones. This one here would be getting rid of one of the 2009 Expeditions, and swapping it out with an older vehicle somewhere else in the city. We've got some Expeditions and some other older Crown Vex that have been hand-me-downs from the police department, and we would be able to cycle this one and replace one of the older ones. And one of the older ones would then go to auction. I would also, the FY '23 budget authorizes the purchase of a replacement plow truck for the streets department. The one they're currently using is a 2007. We'd go to the shop, and then they'd auction off the older one, that's actually a 1996 truck. So.
Mr. Rufford, should you have a question? Or Mr. Carey?
Do we have a vehicle replacement schedule?
We don't have an official schedule, you know, based on many factors, you know, parks over the years, you know, it's went from me back in the day, a vehicle runner having 15 different parks and not renewing employees, to what you said the other day, 40, you know?
Right.
So we have shuffled some older vehicles into parks that pick up insurance for the older insurance companies. We park those out in shops, we bring them back out in summer, so, you know, that's thrown a little bit of pushing vehicles out, bringing vehicles in as we go to parks. You know, I mean, a lot of it's based on, you know, wear and tear, and, you know, the mechanics, talking to finance, talking to city manager, and, you know, give them a wider kind of outlook of what I perceive them, you know, we've got a 1983, and we perceive them to be, two orange sweepers you see run around out there, 1983, so, you know, we're keeping some older equipment, you know, running for as long as we can, and we're using them for a short period of time, and trying to keep that flow going, bringing things down, but also pushing things up to the back end, where stuff you want to see is doing. We need deep stuff coming through, but also getting rest of the animals who's not sitting around.
Yeah, one of the things I'd like to embark on at some point is just kind of a fleet reduction exercise, and take a look at what we have. And I think it's been differing philosophies in terms of management over the years, in terms of our preference for whether, from a maybe risk standpoint, we prefer employees to be driving a city-owned vehicle versus, you know, compensating people on a mileage basis for driving their own vehicles for work. And we've allowed kind of different iterations, had different policies and preferences. But I recognize, I think, as having the city vehicles that may not get used as much, every year, that's tire change outs, it's insurance, and maybe just going through and reassessing where we're at in terms of, is it the best meeting our needs, or are there other opportunities would be something worthwhile to do?
Did I hear you term it a fleet reduction?
That would be my goal. Fleet, to see if there are opportunities for fleet reduction without impacting services.
And I hope that we would be open enough that there might actually be the opposite. There might be some additional fleet that would help us save money other ways. If the study is aimed at reduction, you kind of, that's what you look for. Where if it was a more, yeah, if it was just more of an open study, it would seem to me that might be more helpful in providing opportunities that maybe we're not aware of.
Sure.
Vice Mayor Parker.
So when we have an auction of our equipment, the proceeds from that, does that go back into the fund here?
It does go back into the fund, as well as any interest that's earned on the cash balance in this fund. Our interest earnings that we earn as a city on all of the investments we've been talking so much about, that gets allocated to the different funds based on their cash balances. And so this would earn interest as well.
And Scotty does a great job with the auctions, and as you can tell from the moving pieces of different vehicles, we do the same thing with equipment, furniture. We're very resourceful at finding another place in the city that we can house vehicles or equipment. If there's none, if there's not a city need, then we can identify it as surplus for the auction. And the new online system we've been using the last couple of years, Gov Deals has been pretty slick. It's easier on the administration. It probably helps us reach a broader target buyer pool. Very happy with that, and the coordination that Scotty's department does to put that together.
I think that pretty much wraps up the equipment replacement.
Any other questions?
Just one quick one. Just looking at the cost of the police cars, it just seems to me like such an expensive cost. I know there's a lot of other equipment that goes with that that I'm sure I'm not considering, but just curious, because I know, like, some municipalities handle the way they do patrol vehicles differently. Where like, you'll see some municipalities actually purchase one car for every officer, and they take it home, and it's, you know, they have a pretty large fleet versus other municipalities that'll have just a fleet size to just cover those that are on duty, maybe plus some extras as spares. How do we handle that?
So our officers take their patrol vehicles home with them. The chief does as well. And I'd have to get with the chief to understand kind of how longstanding that policy has been.
Sure.
But we do have a patrol vehicle assigned to every officer, and I think we see some general community benefit in having those vehicles readily accessible to them to respond immediately from home, and just having more of a presence throughout the community.
I'd be curious to see some statistics on how frequently they're actually responding from home on a Saturday when they're off, and if that's justified with the cost versus just covering those that are actually on duty and having a couple extras at the station, because do we really need to have someone taking their car home when they live three blocks from PD, and they can sit down and grab a car and cut our fleet in half potentially? Because I know there are municipalities that do that, and I'm just curious what the most appropriate approach for us would be.
Yeah, I'd be happy to get more information from the chief. The other thing I don't know about the vehicles is how specialized or tailored they are to individual officers, but I'll get more information. You'd be happy to follow up on that.
Thank you.
Speaking from experience, I had a take-home car, and so did other people, and it was better taken care of than any patrol car that was in the pool, because it was assigned to you, you respected it, and you took care of it, because you spent, you know, most of your day inside that car. The ones that were sitting in the, in the pool, they got beat up pretty bad.
I think that applies to not just police cars, but anything, Sharon. I'm not saying that this is the only way you have to do it. I'm just curious about it, and think it'd be worth exploring, so.
Ms. Hutchings?
I would just like to comment on the cost of the vehicle. Believe me, they're bid out, and if you're on, working with the state of Alaska, that is the lowest price you're going to get for anything, and it's the additional equipment that has to go in those cars. So really, that's not a bad price. It really is, it's a very tedious job to have to bid out those cars, because I can remember when that's what I was doing. And those are below cost, that they would come to a dealer, is what the entity gets them for, plus all the additional equipment. So they're usually fairly close to as low as you can go.
And actually, what I'm hearing right now.
Scotty, how much?
It's about $19,000 for the outfitting. Reverse buckles, you know, so right there is, you know, $30,000 just for the outfitting. Certain officers do ring them up different ways, you know, as far as how they want their shot, and where they want their shot, and some keep them up, some crack them high, you know. Some of the driver's doors are bulletproof, so either officers protect, you have bulletproof, you know, door, you know, so I'm sure there's, officers definitely do set them up in a little bit differently, I'm not saying, but that's, you know, that's definitely being probably chief about it.
Actually, one of the things I just heard is there is a shortage of police-equipped vehicles right now, so it may be a difficult time even to find one.
Well, and to be fair to COVID, pre-COVID, this is sometimes a challenge where we'd have a patrol vehicle on the replacement schedule that we have a difficult time just getting it on time, or it's delayed, or by the time we get it, the costs have increased beyond. So I think we'll see more of that. It'll be exacerbated now.
Get some of that police bikes and do more bike patrols.
Okay.
The very last fund to close out the budget review is the debt service fund. I'll throw it over to Melanie.
Sure. So in December of 2010, the city issued general obligation bonds for expansion of our library. We'd been paying on those bonds for 10 years, and then in July of 2020, you may remember that we had the opportunity to refinance those bonds. And so we did that, and we saved the city about $134,000. Those bonds are scheduled to be paid off in 2031. The proceeds from the refinancing of the bonds, the proceeds from the newly issued bonds actually paid off the old bonds, so we only have the new bonds left. And those will be paid off in 2031. Previous budgets, because of the type of bonds that the old bonds were, they had a component to them where we received a subsidy from the IRS for a portion of the interest paid, 45% of the interest paid. That's no longer part of the new bonds, but we're still saving money. But that's, that's the intergovernmental revenue subsidy that you'll see, 34190, that line item, that's why that's no longer the case, because that was part of the previous bond structure. Really, the only expenditure in this fund is just the interest and principal on the bonds, and the payment, what pays those expenditures is a transfer in from the general fund.
Any questions from the council? I guess that concludes the budget review. Are there any general questions on the budget at all? Mr. Carey?
I can appreciate very much that maybe everyone else here knows a great deal more than I do at this time. I want to say how helpful this has been. I greatly appreciate these yesterday and today, and the very positive and professional way that you handle all of our questions. I've been in some places where people, if you question anything, they think you're against it. Everyone's done a really good job. And again, I just want to say for myself, it's been very educational, very helpful, and I greatly appreciate the two of you, as well as the staff people have come in, because I haven't seen anyone come in kind of worried about stuff. And again, they've been very open and, I think, very direct. So I thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions or comments?
Also, thank you for all the work that goes into this. I'm sure this is a very significant effort, and I'm excited to see how much this takes off your plate moving forward. So thank you.
And I like all that. A lot of work, a lot of effort, not only by you, but all the staff that was involved in putting this together. Valuable information, and we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Thank you, council members. We've got, actually, the packet will go out tomorrow, probably. So the budget ordinance will be introduced at the May 26 meeting, and it will be set for a public hearing on June 9. We also have the mill rate resolution. That's a resolution, and that'll be on the May 26 agenda for decision at that evening's council meeting. Please reach out to myself or Melanie if you have any questions over the next week. After that, I'll be out of town, but Melanie's available, Kyle's available, and Shelley as well, particularly if you're thinking of proposing amendments or changes to the budget. Shelley emailed some instructions earlier today. She didn't even let us present the whole thing before she told you how you can go about changing it, but I do appreciate that guidance. I would ask you to connect with Melanie or Shelley, and they'll connect with each other if there's ideas that you have or things that you want to bring up at the public hearing. And that allows us to calculate the numbers, get prepared in terms of helping articulating that change at the public hearing itself. But other than that, it's been a pleasure and glad we had an opportunity to present it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll conclude this work session.